The following program is sponsored by the Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Ely and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Special County Commission, Board of Public Health and Fire Commission Meeting, November 16th, 2020.
Just a second.
Jennifer.
Yeah, we've got a minute or two.
Yeah, Stephen was in town, he said he saw you at the Texas, he was bringing you up. He was at the Texas Coast Station getting gas yesterday, I guess.
Really?
Yeah, he's been out to BJ's place for about five days.
Apparently, I just had my head in the clouds.
Well, he did.
I spent all week at reading twenty years.
They even noticed everybody that I was over again.
PTME, Park Stare, Antleria, Dominations, and Scoring.
Look, I just rode down the road.
Andler.
Eight, now, for Emler, that's due tomorrow.
My R D today at nine.
How many have you got?
I have twenty.
You're scoring it right now?
They're all scored and having attempted to complete the spreadsheets.
I'm scoring it. It started yesterday, like last night. I got three out of the eight now.
That's what I did, seventy and seventy-one.
They logged in the bill.
That was my, yeah, it was a pantheon.
I got, I took a day, a holiday to.
Have logged us up.
I had two thirty hours. This is part of a holiday, I work a holiday.
I'm here for that.
And Shane, and ended up with fifty-five. This is not like, you know.
And they all have those little car models, their back homes all around.
He said in the middle, they have.
Okay.
Did you need your puppy?
Yeah, I think I probably don't think.
They are.
Different local parts.
Yeah.
Try different things.
They wanted to sell that wood.
Yeah.
It's got a really big stuff.
But they can't replace it, you know what I mean?
Down there, it's their own compound.
Yeah, and that family, that's where I put that.
Yeah. Goodbye, good, good move. I didn't get a chance to talk to the famous stealing. I didn't get to talk to that muncher. I'm glad to see you, Hannah. Thursday, she wasn't gonna come, and then she showed up on that park, so she made it.
Yeah, she and I got this for quite a while. We did this for about a half hour.
In, in the coffee? Yeah, it was too cold out there for her.
Yeah, she's not looking so great.
No, no, but I'd say Johnny would have gone before.
Yeah.
In the meeting, this meeting is being recorded.
Are we ready, Jennifer?
Um, almost, this didn't come up, so.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not. Other hand, there's nobody down there, I'm sure people are going to follow the hundred yard green. When I first went there, there was somebody. So, yes, I was shooting at hundred.
Was that them?
Yeah. Okay, I think we're in. Yeah, pull yourself up in here.
Okay. Everybody else is ready? Elizabeth?
Yes, sir.
Good morning, and welcome to the Monday, November 16th, regular scheduled meeting of the White Pine County Commission. Would you all please stand to join us in the pledge? Ian, why don't you lead us today?
Pledge, ladies and gentlemen, to the House of Representatives, and to the House of Representatives, one nation, one justice, one fairytale.
As normal, the first thing we'll do is we'll have one moment of silence, prayer, meditation, whatever you'd like, so the first moment of the meeting is set aside for that. We'll move into the meeting, and the first part of the meeting is for public comment. Is there any public comment on the phone? Jennifer?
I have public comments.
Yes, who is next speaking, please?
Uh, this is Amanda Hilton.
Okay, go ahead, Amanda.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Amanda Hilton, General Manager at Robinson Land. In the last two weeks, Robinson has been the most COVID activity at the site since the pandemic began. Last week, we had twenty-two employees with active positive COVID cases, and at one point, we had an additional forty employees who were out due to living with someone who had an active positive case or awaiting test results. That was a total of sixty-two people out. None of these accidents were due to exposure at our site. We are very concerned about the increases in cases within our community, and if these increases don't slow down, we are at risk of making difficult decisions about our business. In March, we set the following priorities in this order. First, the health and safety of the Robinson team. Second, the health and safety of our community. And third, continuing safe operations at the site. At Robinson, we maintain strict COVID control, including mandatory face covering, social distancing, contact tracing cards, and an aggressive disinfecting campaign. These strict measures are important for us to minimize the risk of community spread at Robinson, not just for our community as a whole, but for the continuity of our business. While Robinson can mitigate the spread on-site, it is concerning that social events continue in our community, including large groups with no face covering, and that there are organizations and businesses that continue to discount the risk of the virus. Please consider taking a more proactive position in regards to COVID to minimize the health and safety risks to our community and to protect the businesses that are working so hard to stay open through this pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else on the phone that has public comment? Jennifer, have you seen anyone?
Um, no.
Okay. Anyone in the audience, please come forward, state your name.
My name is Tony Locke, I'm a lifelong resident of White Pine County and a past Public Works Director of White Pine County. My comments today are in regard to item 2B2, the canvas of the vote for the 2020 general election. I want to stress, the intent of my comments are not to insinuate that there is anything done by our local election board officials, Nicole, I think they all do a great job, and I believe they probably perform to the utmost of their ability. And my question is in regards to whether or not the Dominion system was used in the White Pine County election. Dominion, and it was. In light of that, that system currently nationally has enough question around its ability to perform honestly, that I would, I would recommend for request that the commission look, look very deeply and thoroughly into that. I also want to register my displeasure with the methodology that the state threw upon us all with regard to being allowed to vote beyond election day by manner of mail. I do not believe that that was constitutional. And subsequent to a discussion with our, our newly re-elected State Senator Pete Go Vashia, he expressed that he thought it would be very beneficial if the rural counties refused to ratify the vote in light of such circumstances. I just want to register my opinion that I think that is the methodology by which the commission would best be serving the citizens of White Pine County to take that option into, into consideration. And with that said, I thank you for the opportunity to exercise my rights as citizens of this great nation and to express my views.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Any other public comment in the building? Anybody on the phone? George?
Mr. Chairman, per Governor Sislax's directive, Title 24, Section 5, which states, "Individuals not exempted by this directive or guidance issued by the state's health response, should be required to cover their nose and mouth with a mask or face covering when in a public space, whether publicly owned or privately owned, where the public has access by right or invitation expressed or implied, whether by payment or money or not." Commissioner Horace has attended at least sixteen, seventeen public meetings that I've also attended, and that this state still does not wear a mask. As a public official took an oath to enforce and provide by our laws, he needs to comply and resign. How long is this scenario gonna continue? The numbers are going up. As a public official, there's an obligation there. The rest of the commission has the same obligation, and you, let's see, and you continue to enforce the law under color law. We gotta stop this. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda, item 1F1, shooting, 1F1, 2, and 3, you need to terminate any of our road agreements with Western Oil, Western Gold, and Energex. This has gone, drug on for several months. There's no credible sign of cooperation, and they are failing to maintain the road that they have disrupted. The contractor failed to maintain the minimum standards of philosophy they did not care of. You need to consider going after their bond and their state license. Did you do that? I brought that up once before. It is not the taxpayer's obligation for the destruction that they have caused. Why do you treat those cargo bags with tick plugs and bent over when your building inspector will not issue a building permit to which I'm prepared to pay for? Stop the selective discriminatory practices that you're participating in. You have an obligation to the taxpayer, and you're not doing that. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda, item 2A1A, you're to answer concerns and questions that I have raised, and it appears that the item will not be heard at this time, too. It appears that the item will be heard at a time that I cannot attend. I ask that you table that item, reschedule it for the meeting. There was nothing in the package for me to refer to in order to know what you're going to address. I can't stay that late. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda, item 2C4D, you're to consider approval to award contract to base an engineering for McGill Slidetch C B G grant in an amount to be determined. Are you hiring them by the hour? What's the rate? What is the total amount that you have to work with for that project? It's not on the agenda. Taxpayer has no idea what you're talking about. Mr. Chairman, rumors been flying of embezzling to tens of thousands of dollars from the railroad for quite some time. The county parent rec board contributes more than $240,000, I've asked continuously from the parent rec board, if any of their members are on the railroad management board, and if that's true, I'm hearing nothing. The reasons at a council meeting, Caroline McIntosh admitted that she was a member of that board. We can't have it both ways. If there's a concern in the community, the monies have been embezzled. It's either true or it's false. And we have a board member that sits on one board that contributes money to another board that they sit on, they have an obligation to disclose, or they have an obligation to get out of town.
Okay, George, you're hearing this. Yes, thank you.
We need to address that, Mr. Chairman.
And on your, on your items, I'll get you up there as soon as I can on my time after leave. I spent a lot of time getting the answers for you, and I'm gonna give them to you.
I don't see anything in the back, but I want it in the purple, I want it written.
I've got it written here, so I'll give you everything I can, Tom.
Thanks.
I'm gonna answer to you. Anybody else? Is anybody on the phone? Okay. Seeing none in the audience, hearing none on the phone, we're gonna proceed with the meeting. Page two, we are now gonna go recess the county commission meeting and go into the fire commission meeting. And the first thing on the fire commission meeting is public comment. Do I have any public comment on the fire commission meeting? Anyone on the phone? Jennifer? Anyone in the audience, please come forward, state your name.
Mr. Chairman, at numerous commission meetings, I've asked if your fire inspectors had a chance to expect an ingress, ingress on Avenue B accessing Highway 93 near the Holiday Inn. The road is much too narrow to allow emergency vehicles to access, let alone a larger truck or ladder truck. The Holiday Inn is a three-story structure, the city of Ely has failed miserably to address the issue. There is no proper ADA access along the side of the band camp junkyard. The curb should have been installed back another six feet to allow for a wider road. County and city really need to hire engineers and inspectors to know what they're doing and abide by the codes they've adopted. Again, here's a picture. The road is way too narrow, it's misleading, you're gonna have a terrible accident.
Sorry about that. I, that's one of the items I have addressed to answer to you, and I will give you the answer shortly.
Mr. Chairman, on your agenda, item 1A2, you're to consider contracting slash training for fire marshal inspection for new construction and renewals. I am adamantly against that. County needs that. An unbiased outside inspection source. Presently, you have too much selective enforcement codes as it is by locals. I have come before the commission, the city of Ely, numerous times, asking, "How many discrepancies do I have to bring before you, before you do something about the building inspector who selectively enforcing law under color law?" I told you numerous times that the biggest single detriment to growth in our city and county is the building inspector.
I have that answer for you also.
Depending on who you are, nothing gets done, or there is no problem. At your last county commission meeting held on October 28, 2020, I told you that the building inspector has yet to issue me a building permit to remove my house.
I have that answer for you, too, George.
At the last county commission meeting held on October 21, 2020, I informed Commissioner Carson, or I asked Commissioner Carson about the problem, and I have asked, I've told her that I had pictures of the discrepancies she could want to see there. Some of the commissioners are aware of the discrimination, and they must be stopped. I go to pay my fees, and I refuse because the inspector says I don't meet state NRS. Really? And the others do? I'm not blind. Some others may be, but I'm not. That won't equal protection under the law. The state fire marshal's office will give fairness. The good old boys will not. That item is being scrapped. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll give you those answers shortly. Is there anyone else? Hearing none and seeing none, we're gonna proceed with the next item on the, it's on page two, item A1A, is a discussion update on the fire district progress. Brett North, Fire Chief, and Pat Storey, Ian Long, Tier Fire Chief, please come forward.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. Progress, new fire station project that pays him a part in that. I believe all they have left to do is to strike, and that project's done. The real frustrating project is, when I talked to Donald already last week, he's shooting for the end of the month, and I bet on him, he had some delays on the cellar cells. They were, they were in Tuesday when I was over there. So, progress is going forward or not? Started me and Keith last, it started last Tuesday. The station long, we've got Reach, Air, Medex, city folks, county folks, trainers. We got twenty-five students signed up, taking it so far. Vehicle extrication training will be held at Station One Saturday, the 21st, 9:00 a.m. That's with Ellen Curtis out of Salt Lake. And those are my thoughts, I think it's about it for the, unless you got questions.
Anybody?
Has the one dating started, or?
It hasn't, yeah, so. Wright Brothers been pretty busy.
Yeah.
From our end, everything's been working great. We had a structured fire Wednesday morning. Soon as I knew we had an active structured fire, I requested assistance from McGill. McGill responded with an evening, they had seven personnel, we had a person, personnel from Ruth and Michael Wana that assisted us on a structured fire here in Ely, so everybody worked great together, it was good, Brett had a lot of new guys on the department, so kind of some of their first fires, so they had to be able to get in and do some hands-on actual skills and training stuff that we did with them. We're still doing our weekly EMS meeting over Zoom with London, everybody being able to participate, and we're still holding our weekly fire training that all the county folks have been attending also, so. We had a big accident on Monday, too, same thing, we had a great response from McGill and the city side, too, had all three of the city ambulances out on that accident, so we were kind of left with nothing in the end. And we did have another call away, we were all on that wreck, so we just handled it with staff that was in town, responded to the incident at the school, and took care of things until we had an ambulance free up for it, so. And the city did just approve at this last meeting. We are purchasing an additional ambulance also to have, to put into the fleet, because it's just kind of, that one's not reliable, and we're just kind of shorthanded at the time.
Thank you. Anybody got any questions of, Pat?
Hey, Rudy, guys, thank you so much. Thanks.
Thanks a lot for your work. Really good.
Okay, with nothing else, we're gonna move on to item number two. Item two is a discussion update on the progress on constructing, training for fire marshal inspections for the new construction and renewal. Vice Chairman Travis, please give us your report.
Yeah, I just wanted to touch base with Brett, and Brian's not here, but as far as just how I progress.
It's all set up and ready to go, it's probably first of December.
Yeah. Well, actually, we're gonna start the inspection class for, for like Brett and our folks will probably start on the, right at the beginning of January. It's gonna be like a hundred and twenty-five bucks a person, just mainly for books. We'll get that class started. As far as the other portion you're talking about, I don't know where they're at on, I believe Brian was working on that, on trying to find a contractor to do the new construction, because basically the class we're gonna do, would be go around and do existing businesses. You know, Brett had a place in McGill that was gonna be doing a business license, or received a complaint, can go in and do an inspection, but new construction is the one that's, I think they're looking at a contract company to follow up with on that.
I believe we have one that we got in Salt Lake area somewhere. Who's gonna work with?
Go ahead.
So, in the backup materials, in regards to, is this an example of what we might be looking at, with an interlocal agreement?
I, geez, I don't, I don't know where Brian's at on, where he did that.
I don't know where Brian's at on that.
Okay.
Yeah. And they, they're trying to do is basically line up a contractor who will, it's gonna be no, it really won't be an interlocal agreement, because there will be no cost to the city or the county. So, what it's gonna be, is gonna fast-track people, they have the choice of waiting for the fire marshal to review their plan, that is their normal cost that they send in the fees, but fire marshal, as you know, their backlog, they've only got two staff that are doing plans, so if they don't want to wait the six, eight months that it's gonna take the fire marshal to do it, they can pay this third-party company to review their plans and do everything and sign off on it so they can begin construction. It's gonna be the contractors that's gonna bear the cost of that, it won't be the city or the county. So, it will be no financial impact to either entity, it's gonna, it's gonna basically come down on the, the, or the project is that's pursuing that, that will pay that fee if they don't want to wait the time it's gonna take the fire marshal.
And what we, what we have in our backup then is, they've used, I don't know, maybe Brian put this in here, it's, it's an interstate, interlocal contract between public agencies, between the state of Nevada, Department of Public Safety, but state fire marshal division.
Yeah.
And they're using Humboldt as an example, they have.
So, that's what it's gonna be, that's where it's gonna be?
Yeah, so that's, that's gonna be in agreement, that's what I'm talking about.
Basically, what, basically what it's kind of saying is, we're gonna give authority that instead of going to the fire marshal, we'll let a third-party company review the plans, and they'll sign off on it, because they'll, they'll be the ones that have all the certifications and everything to stamp the plans in which the fire marshal will approve.
Okay.
So, basically a way to fast-track some of these projects.
Absolutely.
Without having to wait, you know, because like I say, the fire marshal office now is so backlog that it's, it's crazy on everything, the training side, everything, they're just short-staffed and everything going on, I mean, the response from them is just slow at this time, so.
And all these third-party companies are, they have, they have a process where they're certified with the state, so it's all.
Yeah, Elko County uses the one that I think Brian's gonna use.
And it wasn't the best anyhow, so far as service.
Yeah.
So far as it being timely.
Yeah. So, I think this will fast-track everything.
Yeah, it's just, got some red tape and.
Yeah, give them another option to streamline their project.
We've seen too many new businesses that everything's set and ready, and then they sit and wait for three, four months to get a fire marshal inspection, get things done so, so that they can actually open their doors, and they're losing money to hand over fist while they're running, so I think it's.
Well, and that's the thing, and then they're getting mad at the local entities, and, and it's totally out of our hands, it's, it's way over our heads, it's stuff that we're just not gonna sign off on or do. I mean, we don't got the expertise or the certification to do it, so I mean, it's, I mean, they're, they're complaining at the wrong people when they are, you know, complaining at the local level when it's a state level that they gotta get the approval through.
Anyone else got a question of either the fire teams? Thank you for that, well, thank you all.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate you.
Okay, we're gonna go on down to item three on page two, and this is discussion for possible action, the approval of the monthly financial reports for October 2020. Elizabeth?
Thank you, and the, the reports are in your backup documentation, I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them, otherwise I'd ask for your approval on them as presented.
Any questions by anyone? Not a little promotion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Maury. Second by Travis. Any further discussion?
Travis, yeah.
Excuse me, Ian. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? As unanimous? Okay, we'll go on to item four, discussion for possible action, the approval of budget transfers within and between functions or programs within a fund that do not increase the total appropriation of the fund or adjust for approved grants slash agency funds. Elizabeth?
Thank you, and the only thing in here is just, we adjusted budget to reflect the USDA grant for the ambulance.
Questions by anyone on the commission? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Ode to approve.
Motion by Shane.
Second.
Second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? As unanimous? Item five. Item five is discussion for possible action, the approval of the minutes from the October 14th to 2020 fire commission meeting. Does anyone have any additions, corrections, or subtractions? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the minutes of October 14.
Motion to approve the minutes from October 14.
Motion by Maury.
Aye.
Second by Shane. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Last item in the fire commission meeting is public comment. Is there any public comment on the fire commission meeting? Anyone on the phone? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none and hearing none? We will recess the fire commission meeting and reopen the county commission meeting, we'll go to page two, it's a 9:15 public hearing. Item one is a public hearing, this is discussion only. The White Pine County Board of Commissions will take public comment regarding its intent to lease the following described industrial property to the University of Nevada pursuant to NRS 244.2833. Mike, do I need to read all these legal descriptions right here?
No, as otherwise it's stated in the agenda on pages two and three.
As otherwise stated in the agenda on pages two and three. So, you're with the force?
Yeah, I just thought it'd come up so you can see me hearing better on this, because we have a little bit of process on these next few items. So, this is a public hearing, and the member of the public who wants to make comment on the commission's intent to lease those rooms to the UNR, now is the time to address the recognized member of the public.
Anyone on the phone? With a comment on this leasing agreement, or anybody in the audience? George?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm in favor of your folks leasing this, the University of Nevada, and the services they offer are much needed in this community. I'd hate to see them put by the wayside or be cut back. It's incumbent on you guys to work with them, so I would encourage you to sign the lease. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, Mike, go ahead and proceed with your.
All right, so the process is, the commission discusses it and would approve a resolution finding it in the possession of the county. There is no lease in the backup, it's on its way down here, so what we'll do is we'll trail back the actual next item after the resolution of, obviously, probably to release it a little bit, and we'll take up the things that are currently on the campaign. So, if we all have time to discuss, we'll take possible action on the resolution.
Anyone on the commission have any, any input on this? Anyone on the commission have any, any input on this lease agreement with the University of Nevada, possible leasing?
Well, I mean, the resolution looks fine, uh, we'll see when it is when it gets here, so I'm fine with.